Call to order the special meeting of the Beverly City Council Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames? Feldman? Here. Flaherty?
Here.
Flowers? Brady's?
Yes, here.
Hausman? Rand? Matando? Hello? 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 Hello?
Please, cut the air.
Guanxi.
I am here. Councilor Hausman, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Mr. President. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Hausman. Councilor Flowers has joined us. Make note of that, Ms. Kent. First up on our agenda, we have resolutions, and Mayor Cahill is here to talk about Order Number 154. Mayor Cahill?
Mr. President, sorry about that.
That's okay.
You caught me trying to get my tie on. A moment. Which is 154?
It's the Clean Energy Resolution.
The 100% clean energy. So, folks, listen, you all know this. You're familiar with it. This is something that the Clean Energy Advisory Committee has been working on. I've been working with them, as some of you have, and we were fairly far along with language when COVID hit. And we, you know, made a commitment to picking it back up and trying to get it accomplished before your summer break. So it's before you tonight. I do want to say that a lot of people have done great work on this, and I'm appreciative, very appreciative of it. You know, as we all know, we are just in the process of kicking off a 14, 15-month climate action planning process that we're undertaking together with our neighbors in Salem. So we're really excited about that. And, you know, certainly the goals that we're setting here of moving as quickly as we can towards 100% clean energy use by the municipality, by our government. The main areas in which we burn, create greenhouse gases, as we all know, are our transportation fleet, our buildings, our electric use, and managing our waste stream. So those are areas that we're all looking at and will be some of the recommendations that come out of the Climate Action Plan. I don't want to ramble on. I just want to make sure that I say that the Clean Energy Advisory Committee has been moving on this for some time, and this has been something that one of their members, Mr. Hopps, the former Chair Fred Hopps, who's with us, has really been advocating for years. It's been, you know, I think it's fair to say it's his baby, and he's done a lot of great work in helping educate all of us and get us to this point. So I know councilors have been in the conversation and invited to be a part of this. This is really being presented as a joint resolution by the CEAC, the Clean Energy Advisory Committee, by me and by you as the city council. So I'm excited that we're here. Look, we're, you know, we said this, we had a bit of this conversation at the last meeting. The need is so urgent for us to be moving as quickly as we can do so towards more and more clean and renewable energy use. You know, before COVID, there was a lot of direct attention on just how quickly we can transition to an economy that really promotes and invests in clean and renewable energy and all the economic benefits that can come with that. We were knocked a little sideways with COVID, but we don't want to lose focus on the importance of this. So I'm glad that it's with us tonight, and we're able together, hopefully with your consideration, hopefully vote in support of this, you know, to really kind of stand up tall together, shoulder to shoulder, and say, "We're going to do this as quickly as we possibly can." It matters to every one of us, to our kids, to our grandkids, to our whole community. It matters in terms of equity. It matters in terms of economic opportunity. It matters in terms of making sure that the planet is hospitable to human life for, you know, generations and centuries to come. So I'll stop there, and I really appreciate the chance to share a few thoughts on this, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mayor Cahill, just a question for me. Is there any way that your office could put together a press release and get it to the Salem Evening News? I know it's hard for people to follow along when we do our meetings through Google Meet Now as opposed to live, even though they are broadcasted on BevCam. It's something that I think is so worthwhile, the news doing the story on.
Absolutely. And Mr. Hopps talked about this at the CEAC meeting the other night. He was looking to try to put something together for us to use as a press release. I think it probably needs a quote from you, Mr. President, and from other councilors if you're interested. And yes, I know that Mr. Hopps was looking to try to start to put that together, so maybe we can put it right back in his lap after tonight, if in fact you folks adopt this.
Great. So you know what? I'll just entertain a motion to approve the resolution order on Number 154 on Clean Energy.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Ms. Kent.
Yes. Flaherty? Yes. Flowers? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Matando? And Guanxi?
Yes, and I apologize, seeing this is my first Google Meet meeting. I forgot to read the script. So I'm going to run through the script real quickly, and then we'll get back to our agenda. Script for remotely conducted city council meetings Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. Confirming member access as a preliminary matter. This is Paul Guanxi, President of the Beverly City Council. Before we continue the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I am confirming that all members in person who anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me, and I heard everybody already. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor has ordered suspended the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does not have public participation. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via the computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22, the rules and regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22. All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance or as provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation, and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed and subcommittee actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand and signed by a majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject matter may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereof and a vote thereon. However, if the council may by majority vote order any matter pending before a subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or be forthwith returned to full counsel. So we'll take a roll call vote, so that we can take our votes as a committee of the whole on the floor. Ms. Kent?
Ames? Yes. Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando? And Guanxi?
Yes. Now let's move on to Order Number 160. It's Councilor Hausman's Green Municipal Aggravation, Aggregation Resolution. Councilor Hausman?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd also like to recognize members of the Clean Energy Advisory Committee as part of this resolution. I'll just quickly mention their names. Chairman, Chairperson, excuse me, Julie Quigley Long, Julie De Silva, Tom Keely, Sean Leach, Amy Smith, and by no means, last but by no means least, Fred Hopps, who was the founder of this, of this city committee, and has been his leader effectively for a long time. So I would like to read the resolution out loud and first invite the Clean Energy Advisory Committee, Julia Long, to say a few words before I read it out loud and we vote on it.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Hausman. Thank you, President Guanxi, and all the city council members. I'm going to speak both to the resolution that you just voted on and the Green Municipal Aggregation together, since they're both very relevant to our committee. In my several years on the Clean Energy Advisory Committee, the pathway to 100% municipal clean energy resolution has remained central to our heads and hearts. It represents a commitment to reducing our dependence on fossil fuels and adopting the cleanest choices for municipal energy consumption whenever and wherever feasible. City Council unanimously passed our first pathway to 100% resolution in 2017, thanks to the diligent work of members of the CEAC and then Chair Fred Hopps. Due to the hard work of Mayor Cahill, Beverly City Council, our committee, and countless others, our city has made strides with several significant large-scale green projects currently in the planning phase or on the way to completion. Discussions are planned for more. But we at CEAC felt that now, in light of the heightening climate crisis and amidst increasingly accessible resources for clean energy procurement and support, it's time we recommit ourselves to a stronger resolution with tighter deadlines for energy independence. We appreciate your continued enthusiastic support for this. A major element of today's pathway to 100% is Green Municipal Aggregation, our second proposed resolution of the evening. As you know, Green Municipal Aggregation is one of the most impactful ways, impactful ways that a city can reduce the collective carbon footprint of residents and businesses while investing in the cleanest energy around, stimulating our local economy, and likely saving money. I am so pleased to be part of the Clean Energy Advisory Committee this time of burgeoning opportunity and forward momentum. Thank you for your consideration of both the pathway to 100% municipal clean energy and the Green Municipal Aggregation resolutions. Amy, Fred, Julie, Tom, Sean, and I look forward to working with city councilors, the mayor, and other stakeholders to fulfill these two commitments to progress and the many more to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long. And Councilor Hausman, answer your resolution.
Thank you very much. I just want to give a quick shout out to the drafting committee of this resolution, sort of the subcommittee of the Clean Energy Advisory Committee. Julia Long, who just spoke, Fred Hopps, Wayne Miller, and myself went through multiple iterations before we finally came up with this language as well as the language of Order Number 160, bear with me a minute, it's not 161, but the other adopting a resolution for GMA this evening. So without further ado, resolution in support of Green Municipal Aggregation. Whereas Mass.gov describes municipal aggregation as, quote, "The process by which a municipality purchases electricity in bulk from a competitive supplier on behalf of the residences and businesses within the community." Whereas municipal aggregation is possible due to state legislation passed in 1997 that restructured the electrical utility industry in the Commonwealth. Whereas a municipal aggregation plan which creates demand for new renewable energy to be added to the electric grid by means of the renewable electricity source purchases it makes is also known as Green Municipal Aggregation, or simply GMA. Whereas GMA would consolidate electricity demand in Beverly and allow the city to replace the current supplier with one that may provide lower costs and/or a greater percentage of green energy. Whereas if the city implements GMA, National Grid would remain the city's electrical distributor. All customers would continue to be billed through National Grid, and any customer who chose not to participate as, and any customer who could choose not to participate as GMA is a voluntary opt-out system. Whereas it is determined that the selection and engagement of an authorized energy broker or other qualified consultant is a best practice in creating an aggregation plan, establishing a public education program, and obtaining required Department of Public Utilities and/or Department of Energy Resources approvals. Therefore, be it resolved that it is the joint policy of the Clean Energy Advisory Committee, Mayor Cahill, who was a great partner with us in this effort, the Beverly City Council, to bring Green Municipal Aggregation to the City of Beverly by developing and initiating a plan to enter into a contract to aggregate the electricity load of residential and business properties in the City of Beverly. Therefore, let it be further resolved that the city shall seek to hire an energy broker and/or consultant qualified to assist the city with its municipal aggregation plan with all due diligence. Therefore, and therefore let it further be resolved that the Clean Energy Advisory Committee, Mayor Cahill, and the Beverly City Council, along with any broker or consultant as needed, shall have regular public conversations on the status and steps taken by the city to achieve Green Municipal Aggregation.
Thank you, Councilor Hausman. I would entertain a motion to wholeheartedly approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And the roll call.
Ames? Yes. Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Matando? And Guanxi?
Yes. Thank you. Great work, guys. We have Ms. Susan Sampson from the Bike Path Committee here to say a few words. Ms. Sampson?
Mr. Fred, I apologize for interrupting. Could I just say one thing before we leave that?
Of course.
Thank you very much. I just, I want to thank everybody involved on both of these resolutions and on the Green Municipal Aggregation one. A lot of great work put in by your colleague, Councilor Hausman, and the members of the Clean Energy Advisory Committee. And, you know, we've been, we've been working through this collectively for some time, and, you know, all moving in the same direction. So the joint nature of the resolution is really, I think, reassuring to the, to the community. I also want to just point out that as we have been working towards this, we've managed to start the process of interviewing for a broker, and our goal is to have a broker selected and brought on board by the end of this month, which will have us on target to work through the educational piece of the whole aggregation through the fall and winter months, with a hope for a launch sometime next spring, kind of window of time. So it's exciting that we're all moving in this direction. Thank you all.
Thank you. And Mr. Fred Hopps would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Council President, for letting me say a few brief words, but I need to thank, first of all, Julie for stepping up as taking over as chair. I couldn't be happier and more relieved than to see her step into that role. Over the years, since 2004, I've watched Beverly from not really embracing the clean energy movement to today with the mayor, such as Mayor Cahill's actions, and recently the city council with Councilor Hausman stepping up and Councilor Flowers with the Futures Act. And I know we've been lagging behind some cities in the state, but we have not, we can only hold our heads high now, and we, I see us becoming a leader of the state thanks to the mayor's leadership and the endorsement by the city council. I feel so much pride for being in the city, and I feel that my years advocating haven't been wasted, and I thank you all for recognizing that, and I look forward to working with you into the future to, you know, make a better world for future generations. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Of course, Mr. Hopps. And it's us, it's your elected officials that should be thanking you for all the work that you've done. It's volunteer work. I know it's close to your heart, but you spent countless hours without compensation trying to make Beverly a better place, and we really appreciate that. Okay. Now we are to...
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor Hausman.
Yeah, if I may, I think a fitting conclusion to this, although it might be out of order, would be to actually have the city council vote on the order to adopt GMA at this time rather than at a different point later in the meeting if you are so inclined.
So you want some motion? I would entertain a motion to go out of order and address Order Number 157, the order authorizing municipal electricity aggregation.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Roll call.
Ames? Yes. Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Matando? And Guanxi?
Yes. Great idea, Councilor Hausman. Ms. Kent, Order 157?
Order Number 157. The Beverly City Council, with the approval of the mayor, hereby authorizes the City of Beverly to initiate the process of aggregating the electrical load of interested electricity customers within the city pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 164, Section 134. It is further ordered that the mayor of Beverly is authorized with appropriate departments to research and develop a plan to participate in a contract or contracts to aggravate the electricity load of the residents and businesses of the City of Beverly per Mass. General Law 164, Section 134, independently or in joint action with other municipalities, and further authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the same.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Mayor Cahill, do you want to make a comment before I ask for a motion to approve?
As, as we all understand, having, you know, having researched this a bit, this is a necessary step for the city council to take in order for me, as the executive, to move forward with the process. So that's, you know, you see, the order is very basic and strict, and that's where the point, I see Councilor Hausman ready to expound upon that, and I was hoping he would. But as I said, you know, we worked through this together and realized this was that necessary legislative step. So thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Hausman.
Yeah, I'll just be brief. I just want to thank Solicitor Williams for her assistance on working through the exact language of this. Again, this is sort of a, an order that evolved out of the drafting team for GMA. So I want to thank everyone there for their efforts. And also just want to be mentioned that the joint resolutions will include the signature lines for all of the members of the Clean Energy Advisory Committee as they are joint cosponsors of both resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Let's head out and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ames? Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Matando? And Guanxi?
Yes, thank you. Great work. Now, if nobody minds, I'm going to go to Ms. Susan Sampson from the Beverly Bike Path Committee. Ms. Sampson?
Thank you very much, councilors. Thank you for having me here this evening. And Councilor Rand, thank you in particular for the invitation. So I just want to clarify. I'm here on behalf of the Beverly Bike Committee, and I know some of you are familiar with us. We are just a community-run, volunteer organization, passionate about cycling and ensuring, and that's why we're here this evening. The recent events have really helped to inform and instruct us in the cycling community and within a committee, an organization, that, you know, systemic institutional racism is part of the sport of cycling. And we are here to listen and to learn, and we're reaching out to partner with you as city councilors and with the mayor to ask for guidance and partnership and collaboration in how to move forward. We're committed to bike equity, and we prepared a statement, which I would like to read, if that's fine.
Of course.
Thank you so much. Okay. So this is our Bike Equity Statement, which I choose to call not a call to action, it's a call to listening. So the Beverly Bike Committee is a local group focused on creating a safe, friendly environment for all cyclists through education, awareness, advocacy, and promotion of cycling for many things: fun, fitness, and transportation. The BBC, the Beverly Bike Committee, is committed to learning and to understanding how to be inclusive and diverse in furthering this mission and doing so with the goal of advancing equity in bicycling in our community and importantly, thus contributing to the larger effort of regional, state, and national bike equity. So towards this end, we have established a Bike Equity Committee. And our initial and critical focus is on listening and learning from cyclists in our community whose voices haven't yet been heard. We are committed to listening without assuming, without assuming what should be done. And then, after listening, taking action to advance bike equity. And we do recognize we don't know what we don't know. So as the next steps towards listening and learning, we're here before you. We're reaching out to the mayor and to all these council people, all of you. And we know many of you have expressed your interest and your support. We're also reaching out to local nonprofits, community organizations as well. So we're asking that you partner with us. We're asking that the word be spread. We are in the nascent point of putting this together, and again, because we need to listen and learn before we know next steps. So in terms of anyone who wants to reach out to us, we are on Facebook only, and we realize that not everyone, the unheard cyclists, not everyone has access to social media, and we have only a very small presence there. So, but we're on Facebook, and it can be, folks can email me directly. So that's where we are, and we're here, please, to learn from you, to ask you to help your constituents and educate us and help us to put together our next steps, because we truly don't know what they are until we listen and learn.
Thank you, Susan. Counselor Ames has a comment.
Well, thanks for coming before us. I think this is a great initiative. And where Ward 3 has so many businesses as well as a lot of housing, I would be thrilled to sit down with you and try to bring some folks to the table who I'm sure have strong voices and opinions about this. This is wonderful. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Sampson, you, did you send Ms. Kent a copy of that resolution that you just read?
Yes.
And so, Ms. Kent, you'll make sure we all get a copy?
I already passed it along to you. Yep.
You did. All right. So I'll check my email. Thank you very much, Susan. We'll figure it out. We'll find a way to help, for sure.
Thank you.
And thank you to Councilor Rand for reaching out to me to make sure you got on the agenda this evening. It's not too bad for a vice president. Let's move on to communications from his honor, the mayor.
We need to accept the minutes, too.
Oh, okay. I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our meeting that was held on... held on, a special meeting that was held on Monday, June 29, 2020.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rattundo? And Guansy?
Yes. Can I do communications from his honor, the mayor, right now, Ms. Kent?
Yes, you can.
Okay, we're on.
Order Number 155. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation the following persons to serve on the Conservation Commission: Ms. Christine Bertoni and Mr. Rick Rendoni. These terms are till June 30, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Ms. Kent, you're getting much better at your Italian name pronunciations.
I practice.
We'll refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs, and we'll take action on those two appointments at our meeting on Tuesday, July 14. Order 156.
Order Number 156. Dear Honorable City Council, enclosed please filed a proposed home rule petition regarding the city's leasing of One Water Street, Beverly, Massachusetts, for the purpose of the operation of a restaurant as public amenity and recreation along the city's harbor front. As you know, the city of Beverly took title to One Water Street in June 1996 with the goal to revitalize the site and expand public access to the waterfront. The property has been paid for decades and was utilized at McDonald's for years. The city's deed for One Water Street specified use for both park and recreation purposes. The 1996 project agreement executed by the city in the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs authorized the city's urban self-help grant application, which specified a lease of the site for restaurant use as one of the means by which public recreation and access and enjoyment of the waterfront would be approved, improved. The project agreement was amended in 2013 and 2017, each time specifying that the property could be developed for restroom use in order to activate the waterfront. The attached petition will facilitate the progress of the project. I respectfully request that the council initiate action on its upcoming meeting. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Can I ask a question before I go to Counselor Hausman? Our city solicitor, Ms. Williams, is here. Ms. Williams, today you sent out a revision to the petition to us, correct?
Yes, I, yes, I did send it to the clerk, and I believe she circulated it to you. So they're minor revisions and edits, and the request is that the vote is on revised version, which includes the title, just for the record, revised 7/7/2020.
Right. I have that in my hand, and I'm prepared to read it when necessary. And the mayor is, the mayor, Mayor Cahill, you're looking for us to take action on this this evening, correct?
Yes. As you all know, this is something that we've been working on, gosh, back around the early part of the new year. We had intention of bringing it to you earlier, but we wanted to make sure that we met with legislative leadership in both the House and Senate, together with our own Representative Paracella and Senator Lovely. That was to ensure that leadership understood the point of the effort here, and that when it came to them, they would be supportive of it and understanding of our need. And that included trying to make sure that the language that we asked you to pass would be acceptable to the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, the Office of House Counsel, and the Office of Senate Counsel. What happened was, we were able to meet with the Senate President just as COVID was starting to take off. We couldn't, we had a meeting set up with the House Speaker, but he was, he needed to cancel that, and it took us a couple months to get back on his agenda. So we've been working with, as I said, our delegation, as well as legislative leadership, and the two legal offices at the State House for each chamber, and it's taken all that time to get us to here. Now, they are ready, Representative Paracella and Senator Lovely are ready to take this and run with it, and do everything they can to get it passed by July 31, which is the end of their formal sessions for the year. So that's why we're asking you folks to act on it this evening. And if you are willing to and able to act on it this evening, we'll then ask that you take a reconsideration vote. Because as you know, if you reconsider something and it fails, then it is done, and there doesn't need to be any waiting period before we can then file it with the legislature. So, you know, as I said, it's already July 7, so they've got just a few weeks to get this thing done at the state level.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Counselor Hausman, you had something?
Yeah, I just had a request, I suppose, and that is, I know that there have been two distinct issues that have been associated with leasing of a restaurant on this site. One issue has been the status of parking and how traffic at the site might affect the neighborhood. And the second is, if you will, the history and the understanding or misunderstanding, if you will, depending on your point of view, around the issue of whether or not this land was purchased by the city solely for recreational use as opposed to the use that is being proposed that would include a lease for a restaurant on the site. But I wonder if perhaps Solicitor Williams or the mayor could speak briefly to the status of, well, the status of the parking and traffic issue, and then perhaps briefly to the, sort of, the history and why the city's position is what it is vis a vis the authorization to lease for a restaurant there.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll touch on the parking, Mr. President, and then let the solicitor speak to the other, the other issue raised. Excuse me. So, as, again, as we all know, just to kind of remind ourselves, because it's getting a little fuzzy with all that's happened since December. But the Planning Board and the Parking and Traffic Commission both vetted thoroughly the project, awarded it the special permit necessary to move forward. And parking was raised and has been addressed and will continue to be addressed. Mr. Bloom and his team recognized that parking is, you know, probably the most significant issue that they need to, they need to successfully address. There are roughly well better than 100 spaces between the site itself and then Harbor Master's Lot. And as we know, dinner hour being the main, the main, heaviest usage of the restaurant when it is open, many of those spaces in Harbor Master's Lot are opened up before dinner, because a lot of them are used by our commercial fishermen who grow quite early in the morning and tend to come back by mid-afternoon. In addition, Mr. Bloom has, he struck a deal for use of parking, let's see if I remember this right, used parking on Mr. Kelly, Brian Kelly's property, up by the Brimble, the Brimble Ave-Sawyer Road interchange. So the staff of the restaurant will be parking up there and will be shuttled down. Mr. Bloom also is looking at using that shuttle vehicle that he'll be purchasing and being able to offer shuttle from the MBTA garage as well as the train station. He's also looking at the possibility for some valeting. Back to the parking lot that is on the property, he's looking at during peak times stacking cars as opposed to just using the available strike spots. And then there's the, then there's the land alongside the train tracks where the crossing is on bottom of Wellman Street, Congress Street. And we've been working with the MBTA to try to ensure that we'll have access to 16 to 18 spaces along there. And with all that said, Mr. Bloom continues to look for additional parking options. But that's, you know, you take all that together, and you add in the improvements that are going to be made when the intersection is rebuilt in the next year, a year and a half, to make it a much more walkable area down by the bridge, much safer for pedestrians, much more welcoming for people to walk to and from the restaurant from, you know, that part of downtown. Take all that together, I think we're in a much better place than before things started. And as I said, Mr. Bloom continues to work with us and try to identify further opportunities for parking. So thanks for the question, Counselor, and the chance to share a few thoughts with the mayor. Madam Solicitor?
Ms. Williams?
Sure. I, I'm wondering if I could hear the question again about the lease, Counselor Hausman. What's the question again?
Yeah, just a little bit about the legal history of the purchase funds and the, you know, there are different opinions out there regarding the, whether or not the use of the parcel is, should be exclusively for a public park as opposed to a park plus the availability of leasing the part of the land that was purchased with state aid for the purpose of a restaurant. So, you know, there has been controversy around that issue. And so I know your office has issued an opinion and advised the council on the status of why the, why the city is authorized to make the lease. But just some comments to sort of address and clarify perhaps the advice the council has gotten related to that status. Is that clear enough?
Sure, I agree with you there. And then if you have follow-up questions, or anybody on the council does, I'm trying, I'll be happy to try to respond to those. And some of this, you know, as you may recall, when the council approved the city going out to RFP to begin with, probably about a year and a half, maybe even two years ago, I think. I know some of you weren't on the council. And then a little over a year ago, approved the lease of One Water Street. You're right, that there was some discussion or expression around this narrative that has been really articulated for the last 20 years or so around this property, that there's some, some view in some corners that the city's not, should not be leasing the property. And so you are correct that in December, the city actually had outside counsel who is very experienced in Article 97 matters, write an opinion for the city council on this topic. I don't have the order number off the top of my head, but that is in the city council's records. And essentially, what this all boils down to is, when the city bought the property in 1996, it explicitly, in the grant application to the state, it specifically included as one of the means by which the city would activate the waterfront is leasing the property for the purpose explicitly of a restaurant in order to make it a destination point for visitors from all over the North Shore, and for boaters who wanted to come into Beverly Harbor and grab a bite to eat. So if you go through the grant application in 1995, there are at least two or three references to the word lease and to the word restaurant use, at least to a third-party vendor. And the city had anticipated all along collecting rent for the purpose of leasing the property in order to pay off some of the payments owed on the bond, which at this point, my understanding from Mr. Ayl was that that bond has been paid off at this point, but it certainly was central to the city's plan to acquire the property. And so the reality is, the city leasing the property now is really the final step in discharging the duty, really, that we have to use the property for one of the purposes for which the city acquired it. And the deed to the property states that it's deeded to the city for park and recreation uses. It's not strictly park uses, park and recreation. And again, one of the components of recreation all along was creating a restaurant destination for the public. And so very clearly, it always was contemplated. I know, my understanding is, I've heard that there's some thinking that we're supposed to be using it solely as a park. The deed itself simply does not bear that out. The city's grant application doesn't support that position. The original project agreement with the state that authorized the funding doesn't bear that out. And the two subsequent amendments to the project agreement in 2010, I think 2013, and then 2017, both explicitly state that the city is authorized to use the rest, the property as a restaurant. So I understand that there's some desire in some corners to preserve it as exclusively a park. That has never been the plan. And in fact, from the very beginning, the city made it crystal clear from the time it acquired the property that there was going to be a restaurant there. And there have been many obstacles to achieving that reality. One of the primary ones was the designated port area, which with the help of the state and the petition to the state, that eventually was removed because it was deemed it wasn't appropriate to continue to have that in existence. So this, and I'm glad you asked the question, because the actual legislation, in our view, is a belt and suspenders measure, because the EEA, which oversees the grant and basically audits and ensures that we're complying with it, has stated on multiple occasions that what we're doing is acceptable and consistent with the grant. As you may know, one of the reasons that an opinion was provided to you last December was that there had been a letter received by the city council where there was some suggestion that there, some neighbors or group may make some kind of claim to the contrary. And in an effort just to ensure that there are no final obstacles, the city is taking this step to also get legislative approval and essentially ratification of what the state has already stated we are allowed to do, and which, in my view, the deed and the project agreements authorize the city to do.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Or Mayor Cahill?
Thanks. And I want to thank the solicitor. There was a great summation. I just want to add a couple of details. As she said, it was never taken to be a quote "park." In fact, what it's been, as we know, for so long, has been a parking lot in an abandoned building. And it was always taken, it was always, I should say, purchased for the purposes of activating that waterfront, as the solicitor said. And you can't activate without something to draw people there. The restaurant itself has always been, and twice in calendar year 2019, the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs actually wrote letters to that effect to reinforce that the restaurant was always, was always anticipated, was always articulated by the city and understood and agreed to by Executive Office of Environmental Affairs as an acceptable, appropriate, and expected use on the property. And I do want to also say, there's an important component to this that we have talked about in the past and that we insisted on in the RFP. As you know, we've worked with many restaurateurs in coming to this, and Mr. Bloom and his team are the ones that, you know, that were really committed all along since we've met them. But we insisted from day one that there needed to be a seasonal takeout window, because it isn't just about going in and sitting down and having a meal. It's about people that come down and want to take a walk along and look at the boats, want to sit out and enjoy the fresh air and the water. And so, you know, for some, it's enough to just come down and do that. For others, the ability to get a, you know, get a plate of takeout food and sit out and enjoy it in that way, or walk along and enjoy it, is also an important part of activating that waterfront. So here we are. This is really incredibly exciting, as we know, so many, many people in this community have waited for so long, and we're getting closer with every step. We're very excited at the opportunity that's ahead of us. So thanks.
And, Mr. President, if I may just add one more thing. So the other thing I'd like to point out is, there really were three components to the acquisition. There was the restaurant component, there was taking over the marina, and then also basically doing significant upgrades to Glover Wharf in order to create opportunities, recreational opportunities with those two spaces as well. And the city has, as we all know, and the council's been very supportive of that over the years in terms of funding, that's happened. So really, this is the third and final piece of the puzzle. And so I just don't want that sort of lost in the shuffle, that the city has actually done those two other things.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any other members of the council have a question or a comment? Hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to approve Mayor Cahill's request.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Batundo?
And Guanci.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Cahill and Solicitor Williams for your help with that one. Let's go to communications from other city offices and boards.
Mr. President, could we request that you folks reconsider? Because if you reconsider and it fails, you don't need that waiting. You can get the legislature moving on it tomorrow.
Tomorrow, that's a great idea. So, I would entertain a motion to reconsider, and we all want to vote no, correct? Ms. Williams?
Ms. Williams, I think it's yes on the motion to reconsider and then no on the reconsideration.
I believe that's technically how it goes, yes.
So, I would entertain a, thank you.
Second.
And you all want to vote no. Ms. Kent?
No. We will vote yes.
You want to vote first? Yes on the motion to reconsider and then no on the actual motion.
On the reconsideration. Is that right?
Ames?
That is, that is right. Thanks.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Batundo? And Guanci.
And reconsider, yes. So, on the reconsideration, we want to say no. Ms. Kent?
Ames? No.
Feldman?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Flowers?
No.
Brady?
No.
Houseman?
No.
Rand?
No.
Batundo? And Guanci.
No. Thank you. Thank you for your help with that one. Communications from other city offices and boards.
Order number 158 from our Finance Director, Brian Ailes. Approval for three prior year invoices from the food department totaling $134.36.
I would entertain a motion to approve Mr. Ailes's request. So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Batundo? And Guanci.
Yes.
Order number 161 from the Council President to reappoint the Community Preservation Board, Chrissy Edwards from 1 Edward Street.
I would entertain a motion to approve that reappointment. So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Batundo? And Guanci.
Yes. Communications, applications, and petitions.
Order number 159, an application for a second-hand junk fuel license renewal for Plump Ensignments and will see DBA Worthy Girl on 156 Cabot Street. And it's a reapplication, they have a license.
I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Flowers, you're getting very good at the seconds.
Thank you.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman? Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Batundo? And Guanci.
Yes. And I'm glad Ms. Williams is still on the line because that is all we have on our agenda other than we have to meet in executive session.
I have two committees.
What do you have? Oh, we're four committees, I'm sorry. God, I'm way off my game tonight.
Order number 148, the application for hoppers and pedals license for Joe's on Arroyo at 61 Federal Street, and it's a renewal.
Renewal. So, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Batundo? And Guanci.
Yes.
And order number...
Hang on, Ms. Kent, Councilor Houseman?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, point of order, Mr. President. Did we already vote on order number 155?
We referred it to the Committee on Legal Affairs. We're going to take action on it at our July 14th meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No worries. Ms. Kent?
Order number 139, and it's communication to the mayor for an appointment for the council on aging for Ms. Stephanie Tallow.
I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Ames?
An enthusiastic yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Batundo? And Guanci.
Yes.
That's it.
That's it, okay. So, I'm going to ask for a motion to, I'm going to read it, and then I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session. We will adjourning from executive session and will not be returning to open meeting. So, I'd entertain a motion. We'll enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, C-21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirement, specifically MGLC 30AS22, governing the review and approval of minutes, moving minutes of the executive session conducted June 15, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Batundo? And Guanci.
Yes. And Ms. Kent, we have a separate invitation to enter into executive session.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll see you in a bit.
So adjourn this meeting?
I think we adjourn out of executive session once I've already told that we're not coming back. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.